Thank you, son. Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Monday, May 23rd. This is the council briefing. Will the meeting please come to order? The time is 2 o'clock. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Councilmember Herbold.
There.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Musceta. Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Swat.
Present.
Council President Oraz.
Here.
And Councilmember Musceta.
Thank you very much. I'm here. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Nine present.
Glad you could join us, Councilmember Musceta.
You are welcome.
So moving on to the on the agenda matters, let's go to approval of the minutes. If there's no objection, the minutes of May 16th will be adopted. Here you can see no objections. The minutes of May 16th are indeed adopted. Let's go into the president's report. I have a kind of a lengthy one, guys, because we've got a huge calendar tomorrow. So let me just dig right in. I'd like to begin by reminding everyone, there will be a, there will not be a council briefing on May 30th due to the Memorial Day holiday. Our next council briefing will be Monday, June 6th. On today's agenda, we have five proclamations for signature. We also will have one 30-minute executive session. It was originally 20, but it looks like it's going to be 30 minutes executive session at the end of this meeting. So please stay on the line. On tomorrow's full council agenda, we will have two presentations of proclamations. Councilmember Herbold will be presenting a mental health awareness month proclamation. And Councilmember Morales will be presenting a Pride Asia proclamation. Thank you both. Tomorrow's consent calendar will include the minutes and the payment of the bills as well as three appointments, which were reviewed and recommended by the Governance, Native Communities and Tribal Governments Committee, and three appointments, which were reviewed and recommended by the Neighborhoods Education Civil Rights and Culture Committee. Councilmember Morales, thank you. You have always have all these appointments. So I always appreciate that you get all these things done. We will take one vote on all items on the consent calendar unless any council member requests that an item be removed for consideration separately. Following the consent calendar, we'll be voting on an ordinance relating to compensation of city personnel that was referred directly to council. If you have any questions about this bill, please feel free to contact Karina Bull on Central Staff. Next, there will be three ordinances, also referred directly to council, to remove the interest charges on delinquent utility bills to assist vulnerable people and businesses affected by the pandemic. Please contact Eric McConaughey or Brian Goodnight with questions at Central Staff. Finally, there will be three bills recommended by the Finance Housing Committee, two bills recommended by the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, and four bills recommended by the Transportation and Seattle Public Utilities Committee, and one bill recommended by the Sustainability and Renters' Right Committee. So obviously, we've been very busy in our committee work. Moving on, today I provided you with a memo regarding the plan for returning to chambers, given the change in the governor's order effective Wednesday, June 1st. As you know, the governor issued a proclamation that now rescinds the restrictions on public meetings. We have successfully and safely created expanded access to meetings during the pandemic, which brings greater equity to the public participation. This is something I think we can all be proud of. I want to add this, though. So I really want to thank Monica and the clerks. I want to thank all of our friends in HR, and also want to thank Dana and Ally. We've been working on this for about three weeks in the spirit of public health and public safety, but also honoring the principles of the Open Public Meetings Act, accessibility and people's opportunity to come to City Hall or to come to chambers and provide public comment. So we are going to have like a hybrid system, and I'll share a little bit more on that later. And I just want to add some personal notes, because this is kind of where the starting point of where we came from. And this is more of on a personal note of what we've all observed, those of us that were here when this all started in March. Well, I think we were all here in March 2020. I think that the pandemic has taught us all, not just city government, to be more flexible and more creative, to be more accommodating to parents, to parents that have small children, to the elderly, to disabled, to people that don't have a car or transportation or rely solely on public transportation. I think the pandemic pandemic has taught us to open up government more for access, and that includes citywide and, of course, across this country, access to education, healthcare, government, court, mental health, all those issues that we now do through telehealth or through the court system and even selecting juries. And I think the pandemic, as we all know, overnight threw us into a experiment in which we were not prepared. And I think it's safe to say that we got prepared and we learned some lessons that we can move government forward and do good things, some of it virtually, and hopefully we'll have a hybrid method where we can have people in person in chambers, because that's really important. And I think the pandemic made us live up to basic principles that as a society, we were either unwilling or couldn't do. And that is being more accommodating to people that are not as able-bodied, that don't have a car, that don't have a parking space. And for me, what I've watched from my particular perspective is I've seen more access and more people calling in to tell us what they think, which I appreciate. I think it's also made us more committed to understanding how important flex time is for families. Also, less driving, spending more time with family, maybe getting to know your neighbors. I think I want to perfect on those lessons. When I chaired parks, one of the things the pandemic taught us, and we did, which we wanted to do, but I think, again, the pandemic made us. And that is closing down streets to have safe streets, having more bike lanes, having more safe streets, be more committed to community centers and what we can do for those that are living on shelter. So I want all of us to just kind of bear with the plan that we're putting forward, the hybrid plan. And I welcome, I've been on the phone with a couple council members, your questions and concerns and working with the court staff, I'm sorry, the the city council staff and our clerks, who really sit down or in the front line of sitting down in the front row. Jody and Teen, thank you. Elizabeth, Monica, all of you. Amelia, you guys are down there in the front line of working with the public, making sure there's public comment, making sure people sign up. And so some of us are going to be in chambers for committee, and I certainly will be one of them. But if there are some council members that have a hybrid plan, I'm open to all those options, because the most important thing is public health and public safety. I don't think anyone here is trying to shirk their responsibilities by not coming into council chambers. I just, that's just not what I've seen in the last two years, and people can either believe me or not believe me. I think there's a lot of good things that have happened that we've learned from the pandemic that is driving less, walking more, being more accommodating to people that physically can't get here, being more accommodating to moms and disabled and elderly folks. And some of us are taking care of little ones, and some of us are taking care of our elders and not exposing them to this pandemic, and we're not out of it. I know that we're going to look at a summer and a fall surge, and I'm a little bit worried about that. So I'm really asking everybody if we could all model some patience and some understanding that not everyone can physically be here. But the clerks are going to be here. Monica had put a great plan forward. We're going to be here. I mean, those that can be here, great, and those that can't, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be too quick to judge people that don't physically show up here. Because not everybody can do that. So going forward, we will continue public access through the virtual technology while adding back the opportunity for the public to attend the meetings in person. And that's what's required of us with the rescinding of the governor's proclamation. It is of critical importance to me that we proceed with health and safety as a top priority. We need to wear masks and support distancing to keep staff and the public safe. So that's how I would like to go forward. And as you all know, I have an open door. You call me anytime and come in anytime and tell me what your plan is or what some issues that you may have. I'm certainly open to all of that. So with that being said, now I've done with my long president's report. I think that's what it's called. Let me go to the signing of letters and proclamations. So as I shared, today we have five proclamations for consideration, and we will hear from each sponsor of the proclamation and then ask for one roll call after hearing from all the sponsors. If you do not wish to add your signature to a proclamation, please state so, state so at the end of the sponsor's presentation. And a separate roll call will be taken on that proclamation. So basically, the lineup is, let's see here. Quickly, I'll just, I'll go through it again, but first up will be councilmember, councilmember Herbold, councilmember Peterson, councilmember Morales has two, and then councilmember Strauss. So when each council member finishes their proclamation, that would be the time to say, hey, can you not put that with the major vote? Because I want to pull that out and maybe vote separately on that. So with that, I hope I didn't confuse everybody. We have councilmember Herbold regarding the month of May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month. We really need that. Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. So can you go ahead and please lead the discussion on the proclamation and for any additional feedback? Thank you.
Happy to do so, and thank you for managing so many proclamations this month, Madam President. Appreciate the opportunity to bring this proclamation forward for your signature, recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. And thank you to councilmember Strauss for suggesting some additional language to be included in the, in the proclamation, which was added. We've all heard about the emerging impact of the shadow pandemic, and many of you may be sick of me talking about it. But really, the last two years of fear, anxiety, economic instability and isolation are affecting us all and occasionally erupting more than we would like to see into aggression, self-harm and violence in our communities. Both our state and federal leaders have sounded the alarm for mental health impact, the mental health crisis's impact on children and teens, but everyone has felt the effects. And although behavioral health is primarily a state and county responsibility, we at the City of Seattle and the Seattle City Council have been stepping up, meet the need with increased advocacy and more funding so Seattle residents can access behavioral health supports that are desperately needed. I thank you and my council colleagues for this important work. And tomorrow at full council, we'll be joined by representatives from the Washington State Chapter of National Alliance on Mental Illness to proclamation. And I hope you'll add your signature today to declare May Mental Health Awareness Month. And if there are no questions, I'll pass it on to councilmember Peterson, who has a Ride Transit Month proclamation.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Herbold. Colleagues, as Transportation Chair, my office worked with the mayor's office on this proclamation for June to be proclaimed Ride Transit Month. June is traditionally Ride Transit Month, but it was not widely celebrated during the pandemic. As we emerge from the pandemic, we're eager to have mass public transit once again, serve as cornerstone of getting around Seattle and the region in a way that is safe, affordable and good for our planet. For events during Ride Transit Month, people can visit the website of transportationchoices.org to provide the public with highlights of this proclamation. I'll read just the last three recitals. Whereas public transportation is critical to expanding equitable and affordable access to greater opportunities, including better paying jobs, educational opportunities, healthcare treatment, social and cultural opportunities. And whereas a just and sustainable recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic requires transit, and we're proud that Seattle residents, workers and students are leading the way in returning to transit as the pandemic restrictions are gradually lifted. And whereas Commute Seattle Disability Rights Washington, Transportation Choices Coalition, City of Seattle Employees and Departments and Local Schools, Hospitals, Companies and Civic Groups throughout Seattle will be promoting transit ridership as a cleaner, healthier, more equitable, affordable and sustainable means of travel through the month of June 2022. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city council proclaim the month of June 2022 Ride Transit Month. So any questions from colleagues? Otherwise, I'll pass it on to Councilmember Morales. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, colleagues. I have two proclamations. The first is for Pride Asia. Pride Asia embraces the Asian Pacific Islander lens to celebrate, empower and nurture the LGBTQ communities. They host an annual event that is meant to create a safe space for the LGBTQ Asian Pacific Islanders to celebrate their identities. I'm excited to be able to join with the mayor and hopefully all of my colleagues in proclaiming Sunday, this Sunday, May 29th, to be Pride Asia Day. Tomorrow at full council, we will present the proclamation to Alaska Manila, and I will tell you more about Alaska if you don't know her already. Introduce her a little bit tomorrow. And so we will present the proclamation to her and other organizers tomorrow during full council. The second proclamation is for Pride Month, which is in June. We celebrate that every year here in Seattle. And for me, this is especially important this year. With the recent leak about the Supreme Court's abortion ruling, it's clear that the right to privacy is at stake in this country. And now more than ever, it's imperative that cities declare their intent to protect the rights of all of our neighbors, regardless of who they love or how they express their identity. Pride Month commemorates the Stonewall riots in New York City, which was a series of demonstrations led by black and brown trans women in 1969, June of 1969, and generally is recognized as a catalyst for the LGBTQ civil rights movement. So this year, as we celebrate the progress that's been made since then, I think it's important that we also remain vigilant in our fight to eradicate discrimination and to ensure justice and legal protections for our LGBTQ community. On Wednesday, June 1st, the council and Mayor Harrell will present the Pride Month proclamation to representatives from our LGBTQ commission at the Pride flag-raising ceremony that we will be having right out here at City Hall at 10:30 in the morning on June 1st. So please join us for that if you're interested. If there are no questions, I will pass it to Councilmember Strauss.
Seeing no questions, thank you, Councilmember Morales. Speaking about National Gun Violence Awareness Day, this was brought to me by Moms Demand Action and the Alliance for Gun Responsibility here in Washington. Thank you to Councilmember Herbold for adding some language to this proclamation. We're here with this proclamation to discuss the fact that gun violence prevention is more important now than ever, as the public health emergency that is gun violence continues to exacerbate. And after more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in gun violence here in our city, that we need to and are going to, with this proclamation, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe and to join in this citywide and national event. On June 3rd, you can wear orange to demonstrate your commitment and support to addressing gun violence. We know that gun violence is preventable. With that, Council President, I believe we have gone through all of the proclamations.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Strauss, for being the assistant president today. I appreciate that. So we went through five and not seeing that anyone has asked any of them to pull any of them aside or not vote on them. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll to determine which council members would like their signatures affixed to the five proclamations that we just heard?
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Councilmember Musceta.
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson.
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson.
Hi.
Councilmember Swat.
Yes.
Council President Oraz.
Yes.
Nine signatures will be affixed to the five proclamations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So let's move in our agenda to the preview of city council actions, our round robin that we do every Monday. And this week, where are you going to start? The order is starting with Councilmember Strauss, Councilmember Herbold, Lewis, Morales, Musceta, Nelson, Peterson, Councilmember Swat, and then myself. Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, happy Monday to you all. Last week in District 6, the mayor and I held a press event at Woodland Park, which highlighted over the process and the accomplishments of over four months of intensive outreach that occurred at the park. This is not, this was not a victory lap. Homelessness is not solved in our city. We have more work to do. This event was situated to highlight how we accomplished this work. And I really want to thank Mayor Harrell for the collaborative effort. His team and I convened to bring a balanced approach to addressing homelessness at Woodland Park. Our phased human-centered approach model, paired with shelter and housing resources that matched people's individually, individual needs, successfully brought the largest number of people inside during an encampment removal in city history. I'm confident that the phased approach is why so many people accepted shelter and housing and why so few people refused. The update today since last week, when I reported on this, is that we now have an accurate number of referrals, which is 89 people came inside since January and 49 people in the last week. We would not have been able to move 49 people inside in one week without the time that we spent building relationships to understand their needs and that we had the shelter capacity that matched their needs. So I just want to again thank Mayor Harrell, Deputy Mayor Washington, King County Regional Homelessness Authority, Evergreen Treatments's Reach, David Aslan, and Josh, the Finney Neighborhood Association, community members who helped, and frontline workers and outreach staff. Your work is incredible, and I want to take this moment to publicly recognize you. Last week, I also hosted my weekly District 6 office hours with residents from Thursday from 2:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. I met with D6 residents, three from Ballard, one from Fremont, one from Finney, and one snuck in from South Lake Union. Councilmember Lewis, we had one of your residents call me up. We discussed homelessness, public safety, mobile crisis response, graffiti abatement, and adding a four-way stop to an intersection in D6. If you want to meet with me, you can sign up on my website. I meet with District 6 residents every week. This coming Sunday marks the 115th year since Ballard was annexed by that darn city of Seattle. And in this month, we will be highlighting factoids about Ballard. I want to thank Julie Kurson from the city's archives for collecting all this information. Just as referenced, Ballard was the seventh largest city in Washington and the second largest in King County. And I think that's probably why our street grid in Ballard makes sense as compared to other parts of the city. It was also the home to the First Peoples for, since time immemorial, the First People, the Duamish people, who then became part of the Tulalip tribes as this area was settled. As I kayaked past Chief Seattle's grave this weekend, I realized how close it is to Ballard. If you want to put it in Google Maps, it'll take you an hour and a half, but in paddling time, it'll take you an hour to get there. And it takes that moment to understand that these areas were more connected than they are today. I dig, and I digress. But here, here are some of the great updates from Ballard in the last week. I attended the sit-in of my lunch at the Nordic Heritage Museum. The Norwegian Ambassador to the United States says the top ambassador to the United States was present, and she chose Ballard as the Constitution Day celebration to attend out of all celebrations across the United States. I was able to walk in the sit-in of my parade with Ballard Elks Lodge 827 with Lois Morgensen, our matriarch, in her throne atop a car and watch. It was really amazing to watch all the streets lighting, lighting up and cheering her name. She is 98 years young and is loved by so many in our community. I then attended the Nordic Innovation Summit on Thursday at the Nordic, at the National Nordic Museum. We had the Icelandic president, John, I'm going to mispronounce his name, so I'm just going to say it was an honor to meet him. It really was. And Mayor Harrell was there as well, and we announced the funding for the Nordic Museum that colleagues, you helped me secure this last year in last year's budget. Because the Nordic Museum did not have fixed seating, it was not, it could not apply for federal funds. And I want to call attention to the fact that the Nordic Museum is more than a museum. It is a cultural center and consulate to the north, to the northwest. In the past two months, we've had the Prince of Sweden, as I said, the president of Iceland, the Norwegian ambassador to the United States, the first time I met the king of Norway. I met him there at the Nordic Museum. This was, you know, when I was in third grade so many years ago. I just call attention to this because the National Nordic Museum takes the time to reflect on our past, to understand our present, and really bring people together to find our future together. Thank you to Eric Nelson and everyone at the Nordic Museum for making this happen. Last Saturday, I attended Ballard FC's inaugural game of their inaugural season with Councilmember Lewis, the sold-out match against Lane United was, was great. We won 5-1. We had an amazing crowd that was very excited. I took the D line, the Metro Bus D-line down to the game and was joined by Ballard youth soccer team of, I think, U-10 girls with their coach from Ballard High School. It was a fantastic community event that really brought a lot of community members together to, and we were able to actually talk about a lot of things that we talk about here at work. And most importantly, even though Ballard was annexed 115 years ago this week, I'm glad to see that Ballard is expanding our boundaries across the Ship Canal to Interbay. Councilmember Lewis, we can talk more about that later. On Friday morning, I joined the parents of Adams Elementary students for a bike train to, as their way of bike to work, they were biking to school. Having ridden, it was fun to talk to the kids, because as an elementary school student at Adams Elementary, I rode my bike to school. So it was nice to be able to make that connection with our next generation. This ride to school demonstrated to me the benefit of greenways, a safe place for kids and families to roll, the need for more grainways, because we are able to set up these streets for the people who live on them, allow for cars and create that safe place to run and roll. This Bike to Work or School Day also demonstrated to me that there are needed improvements for greenways in downtown Ballard. My staff and I attended the One Seattle Day of Service this last Saturday, cleaning interior classrooms at the Ballard Boys and Girls Club. It was amazing to get to spend time with Chief Emery and Rolanda from the city of Seattle. And it was also great to see pictures of friends on the walls from so many years ago. I saw Chris Kammer's picture from 2005, being the youth of the year, and Jacob Meyer from being the youth of the year in 2004. So great. Congratulations, Chris and Jake. Your pictures are still up there. Lastly, I also held my weekly public safety conferencing meetings with King County prosecutors, city attorneys and SPD to address public safety in District 6. I'm here to report SPD's retail theft program is and has been active in District 6. Last week, they made 12 arrests at the Fremont Fred Meyer for burglary and shoplifting. This coming week in District 6, I'll be attending the North Seattle Industrial Association monthly meeting. At this meeting, we'll have the Seattle Department of Transportation discussing the new transportation comprehensive plan. And my staff will be attending the Green Lake Chamber of Commerce this week. And again, I will continue to hold my weekly public safety case conferencing meetings with prosecutor's attorney and SPD. Councilmember Lewis, is that my, is that a hand for me right now, or do I'm going to get to you at the end? I'm almost done.
I'm just getting in the, in the queue for the end of your presentation, Councilmember.
Okay, you want to debate whether Interbay's in Ballard? Oh, we'll get to that. I'm happy to have that conversation. Last week here at City Hall, and Council President, I'll wrap up. I attended Washington Association. I attended, I attended the Association of Washington City's Legislative Priorities Meeting. I met with Marshall Foster to discuss Sound Transit 3 and West Seattle Link Extension. And I also met with S dot staff to discuss the short-term safety improvements to Ballard Avenue. I'm excited to share more later this week. This coming week in City Hall, I'll be meeting with SPD Chief Diaz for a regular monthly meeting. And I will, on Wednesday, I'll be kicking off SDCI's design review workshop meeting. I sponsored a budget item that stood up this committee last year. And I've heard from so many that design review is flawed and that we need to make sure it has the teeth it needs and it doesn't take an overbearing amount of time to get things across the finish line. And so with the May 25th meeting of the Land Use Committee being canceled, our next meeting will be on June 8th. And with that, Council President, that is my report. I see Councilmember Lewis has a question or maybe a statement about the boundaries of Ballard.
No, it's a question. And Councilmember Strauss, thank you for providing an update on the situation at Woodland Park and for your work in coordination with the city's efforts. I wonder, of the 89 referrals for shelter, or I should say the 89 placements for shelter, the number of those placements that were tiny house villages?
I believe the number was about 60, but I'll have to get back to you with the specifics.
Right, but the overwhelming majority, right?
And what, yes, and you know, one of the things that we noticed is that people want single occupancy placements. And right now, tiny home villages are what we have. We need to have a place that an individual has four walls and a door that they can lock. In the past, we've had single occupancy. What was that, Councilmember Nelson?
I was trying to help you out there, but I heard 25 folks took advantage.
Yeah, before we start putting numbers across the screen that are unverified, Councilmember Lewis, I'm going to circle back with you. Because, you know, and one of the things that's important to recognize is that it takes a little bit of time to get the correct data. That's why this week I had a different number than last week, because we put people first and we put our outreach workers out there trying to get folks inside rather than throwing out paperwork. So just before we start throwing numbers around on the record, let me follow up with you afterwards. But just to finish my thought there, it's that, you know, in downtown Ballard, we used to have two But just to finish my thought there, it's that, you know, in downtown Ballard, we used to have two hotels that were single occupancy residence. Hotels, neither, one of them burned down and one of them is now a luxury hotel. And so to your point that I think you're making, Councilmember Lewis, yes, absolutely. People choose single occupancy. Offers at a much higher rate than our twenty-four-seven enhanced shelter, which is better than basic congregate, but still a communal living situation.
Yeah, and to be clear, I mean, the point that I that I was just trying to make is that. Whenever we have one of these significant outreach operations for large encampment, as. You illustrated in the press conference last week, the asset in our enhanced shelter system. That is in very high demand and that people want to utilize and then in turn allows them to move out of a park. Time after time is the tiny house village. And, you know, it's the same thing that we saw with Ballard Commons. We saw it with Bitter Lake, we've seen it now with Woodland Park and other encampments throughout the city. That when we have available capacity and we have tiny houses, we are able to. Have communities where people have an alternative to living in an encampment. And I just wanted to illustrate that, that the overwhelming majority of the people who who did move on from Woodland Park. Did so because there were available tiny houses and and just to to continue as a city to support. That model and support having that capacity in the system. Allows us to help people live somewhere that is another encampment. And I just, I just wanted to take the opportunity to, I wasn't trying to like blindside you with knowing exactly how many there were. I know it was the overwhelming number, it was something in the mid to high sixties. And it just really illustrates our ability to do those kinds of operations to a certain extent is contingent on having tiny house capacity. And I just think it's an important thing to hold up and to lift up as we. Have these discussions, so thank you.
I appreciate that, you know, having gone down to build a tiny home with Sound Foundations Northwest that is now placed at the South End Tiny Home Village. It was an honor to get to help put those walls together. It's also very clear in my mind and knowledge that it is the fact that it is a single occupancy dwelling that is most important to folks.
This, hold up. Thank you very much. I don't want to turn this into a committee meeting, so Councilmember Herbal, can you make your comments and we'll move on?
It's a question. Councilmember Strauss, really appreciate learning from your experiences. I know that. This is an area that, you know, there's, there are things to try and there's again, things to to learn from. I'm I'm wondering whether or not in this particular engagement. Folks were given an opportunity to visit. A tiny house village before making that decision, and if you have anything to share about that, if that's the case, or. Or is the reputation of a tiny house village one that people were able to commit to at sight unseen? I'm asking because we're, we are preparing for a similar engagement, but with a different population of folks. In my district, and these are largely folks who are living in R Vs. And as I will report in my remarks later, we did a site visit today and. I'm just from my individual conversations with people, it just seems like people might be more open to the idea if they. Were able to, just like we do when we rent an apartment or buy a house, visit it first. And I'm wondering, did the city make any accommodation to help people? Visit a tiny house village as part of this long process that you've been engaged in.
Not to my knowledge, but it definitely could have happened there. What I can tell you is that, you know, folk, there were a couple of folks that went to a tiny home village and it wasn't the right fit for them. And they came back and we had to figure something else out for them. It's also an understanding, and this is to Councilmember Lewis's point as well, this was. The shelter, and this is what Mark Dones of the King County Regional Homelessness Authority said at the press conference last week. This was the resource that was available to us at the time of the ending of phase three.
That's not, I think we're gonna cut this off. Councilor Nelson, please be brief, we gotta move on.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Strauss. I am D six adjacent, living there, but. I just wanted to say that I recognize that took a lot of work, so thank you.
Good, let's move on.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilmember Herbal.
Thank you so much. Let's see here, so we do have two items from the Public Safety and Human Services Committee on today's full council agenda. One is the resolution on officer staffing and recruitment and retention incentives. Proposed by Councilmember Nelson. Second is the council bill that I sponsored, requesting that the Department of Human Resources amend personnel rules. Allow for greater flexibility to pay for moving expenses of recruits to citywide employment. The current personnel rules limit this flexibility only to hires in the very highest pay bands such as department directors. Bill also releases funds that are already in the department's budget. To fund this for new police hires, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund this for the new police hires. And then to add for an additional police recruiter and then amendments in committee. Added funding for a national campaign to market officer. And for the National Search for Permanent Police Chief. In addition, I want to note, though not on the full council agenda for our vote on the introduction and referral calendar. We have legislation that approves an agreement between the city. And the Seattle Police Management Association, otherwise known as S P M A, is one of the two police unions. The other is the Seattle Police Officers Guild, otherwise known as S P O G. Greg Boss of Council Central Staff will be available to brief council members starting. Next week after Memorial Day, from Tuesday, May thirty-first through Friday, June third. Please contact him if you'd like to schedule a briefing on the contents of this agreement. I'm hoping to, as well as that, find time on an upcoming agenda, get a public-facing briefing to ensure that the public. Understands the content of this very important grief agreement before the vote as well. Also. That's, that's on the the full council agenda today. Tomorrow, the Public Safety and Human Services Committee. Will be meeting at nine thirty A M. At its regular meeting, includes three items on the agenda, the first. Is an ordinance to establish a process for investigating complaints. To the Office of Police Accountability that named Chief of Police. This isn't in relation to any pending complaints against the current Chief of Police, but it is something that. We've discovered was not addressed in the twenty-twenty-seven Police Accountability Ordinance. And is what I see to be a technical, very important fix to a gap in that. Historic legislation. Secondly, we'll be hearing a presentation by members of Neighborhood Business District. B I A directors about public safety investments that they are proposing. Together with representatives from the mayor's office. And lead about an approach that they have been piloting in Neighborhood Business Districts. Thirdly, we'll be discussing and voting on amendments to Council Bill twelve-two-nine-four. Also known as the pay-up ordinance, and there are fourteen amendments for consideration in tomorrow's meeting. There are items to share about the work of my office over the last week and upcoming week. Last week, I held my regular meetings with each the police chief, the. The Community Police Commission, the Office of Police Accountability, and the Seattle Fire Chief. I also participated in meetings of the OK Director Selection Committee. And just want to highlight that you all have received from. S P D C O O Brian Maxey. Our quarter-one report on police staffing, overtime, and finances. Central staff will be presenting their analysis of S P D's. At our coming Public Safety and Human Services Committee meeting, the first meeting that we have in June. The report from the Seattle Police Department was was delayed at request because of their need to. Gather some information to make it a complete report for us. There are items coming up, just want to flag as far as regional committees that I serve on, on Thursday, the. Regional Law and Safety and Justice Committee meeting is is occurring. Also on Thursday, Link Steering Committee is is occurring, and then on Friday, we're having a special. County Regional Homelessness Authority Governing Committee meeting to review and vote on the proposed twenty-twenty-three budget. Sure, Councilmember Lewis will have more to say about that. And then I will be having virtual office hours this Friday between two and six P M. Other events, just want to highlight, mentioned it last week, but did want to highlight this week. That over the weekend, during our day of service, my team. Joined folks at the West Seattle, I'm sorry, the White Center Food Bank. Though it's located in White Center, it serves many people in need from District One. The food bank served in in twenty-twenty-one, served eighty. Almost eighty-four thousand individuals from the Del Ridge area last year, and I'm really grateful to all the community members who worked. At this location on a regular basis to increase food accessibility, but as well as all the folks who came out. On Saturday in the day of service, it was a great, very opportunity to to come out and. Help at important community resource. Also, as I mentioned earlier this morning, I had a visit with the, a number of folks. Associated with the effort to. Meet the needs of people who are living unsheltered. Specifically, we had the Regional Homelessness. Authority Director Mark Dones and some of their staff, along with outreach workers who regularly through both Reach. There are folks also with. With lead who who joined us and members of the West Seattle Mutual Aid, and we we went out to actually talk to the residents. Of the R Vs who live in this area, and my takeaway is that we. We're going to be moving. Towards enforcement of the seventy-two-hour notice. We really need to be finding out more about how to. Address the fact that there are a lot of vehicles out there that are inoperable, there are garbage needs that. Need to be addressed now, and there are just some some case management needs that are really important that we address. And we need to help people get get the, get these vehicles fixed if they are going to have to move their vehicles. With understanding that the executive is moving towards enforcing the seventy-two-hour notice. Previously met with neighbors of the, neighbors of the RV residents and have been doing so on and off. For years now and have also shared their concerns. And later this week, I look forward to meeting with the mayor's office to discuss the planned enforcement of the twenty-four-hour parking rule here. And I'm really grateful to have the opportunity this morning to talk with folks more about their perspective and insight moving forward. Secondly, I also have attended a front law ferry terminal replacement project. Executive Advisory Group meeting, I'm a member of that, of that, of that meeting and just want to highlight. Online open house for the project through June thirteenth and virtual community meetings tomorrow and Wednesday. My newsletter, it at herbalSeattle.gov has links for the meetings and for the open house as well. Replacement project is a really important. Wash dot effort and really hope that folks can have the chance to check out the online materials and participate. And thank you so much. Do any of my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I will pass it off to Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Good to be with everybody this afternoon. There are no items on this afternoon's agenda from the Public Assets and Homelessness Committee. We did have a great discussion last Wednesday at the, at the committee with the Seattle Public Library. Regarding the Race and Social Justice Initiative progress that that department has made. I will report back at this time, a question was asked by Council President Juarez. Regarding the impact of late fees and. Whether the change in the policy from the last levy to no longer apply late fees. Has had an impact on items being long overdue or lost. Happy to report that the response from the Seattle Public Library is that there's been a thirty-eight percent decrease. In items being overdue or lost, and appreciate Council President Juarez raising that question. And appreciate Seattle Public Library for very quickly providing us the response to share a briefing today. On a related note, I was able to to. Well, I'll do the department stats first before moving on to that. Clean City Initiative between May ninth and May thirteenth collected one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine needles. Also sixty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty pounds of trash from thirteen trash pickup locations. There were no focus cleaned parks for this week, but hopefully, moving forward to next briefing. I will be able to announce parks that got a special deep clean focus from the Clean City Initiative. Libraries. In addition to that follow-up regarding Councilmember Juarez's question. Seattle Public Libraries launched the Summer Book Bingo Program. The Adult Summer Reading Program is presented by the Seattle Arts and Lectures and the Seattle Public Library jointly. If you read books in five categories for bingo or in all twenty-five squares for a blackout of the bingo card. Not only can you earn bragging rights among your colleagues, but you can be entered to earn prizes and highlighted on social media channels for the Seattle Public Library. Members of the public can download their bingo card, and I will be distributing this program via my newsletter. Designed by local artist Jorge. Via Viceni, Vicenicio. This will be in English as well, as in Spanish on the Seattle Public Library's website. And both of those links will be shared in my newsletter this week, so look forward to them, but it's S P L dot org slash book bingo. Or in Spanish, S P L dot org, bingo de, bingo de libros. So you can pick one of these up at any library location and completed cards must be returned to a library branch by Tuesday, September sixth of two thousand and twenty-two. So everybody get reading for the summer and participate in this great program from the Seattle Public Library. The Central Library Bike Cage Renovation Project is underway. The bike cage fencing has been expanded to a bigger size and the new badge reader for the bike cage has been installed. And new bike racks and electrical outlets for e-bike parking are going to arrive soon and be installed in the first week of June. And I will confirm that at briefing once those installations are completed. Last week, and as an appropriate first item, given that I just gave the Seattle Public Library updates. I did have the honor of hosting Tom Fay at the Magnolia Public Library along with the Seattle Parks Foundation. For a meet and greet with Librarian Fay to talk about. His initial baptism by fire as the city's new chief librarian, as well as to take questions from. The community members and from foundation board members about some of his goals and priorities for the future of the Seattle Public Library. It was a great opportunity to meet with local community members and enjoy the Magnolia Local Branch. And really appreciate Librarian Fay making himself available to go and. Do this tour of Seattle Public Libraries with the Seattle Library Foundation. And really appreciate working with Librarian Fay. I joined Mayor Harold and Councilmember Nelson for a One Seattle Day of Service event in Pioneer Square on Saturday morning. Where we joined very nearly two hundred of our neighbors, I would say, potentially even more. To engage in a variety of service activities in the Pioneer Square neighborhood. It was really great and inspiring to be joined by folks from the Alliance for Pioneer Square. Seattle Seahawks Coach Pete Carroll, as well as Councilmember Nelson and Mayor Harold to really. Dig in and really be part of the solution of bringing the city back. And really enjoyed that opportunity to have that good shot of morale in the neighborhood to move forward on. Really coming back from a pandemic that has really hit the Pioneer Square neighborhood particularly hard. And it was a really good morning, we had great weather for it. Look forward to more days of action like that day of service last Saturday. Look forward to more days of action like that day of service last Saturday. Similarly, that afternoon, joined Councilmember Strauss for the inaugural game of the Ballard F C, where they were able to win their first game, which was really exciting, five to one over Eugene, Oregon. And looking forward to continuing that tradition in the Interbay neighborhood and really becoming a big dedicated fan of Ballard F C. It was a great energy. A lot of people turned out and it was a lot of fun to be a part of that. Looking forward to this week, I have a event with Seattle Musical Music Commission along with Councilmember Nelson at Trinity Night Club in Pioneer Square to meet and greet and celebrate the work of the Seattle Music Commission and the Office of Economic Development. Going to be a really good event to really center the musical heritage of the city and really have a conversation about how critical the creative economy is to our recovery, including the important role of our musicians. And I will similarly on Thursday have a meeting of the Puget Sound Regional Council. Otherwise, I don't have any additional updates. If anyone has questions on my presentation, happy to open that up. Seeing none, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Let us see. Okay, there are no agenda items from the Neighborhoods Education, Arts and Civil Rights Committee on tomorrow's full council agenda. Our next meeting is this Friday at nine thirty. I would like to request committee members to please notify me by the end of the day today if you're not going to be present. At that meeting, we'll continue discussing and hopefully vote on the confirmation of Hamdi Mohammed as the Director for the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. So very much looking forward to that. And then we will vote on one reappointment to the LGBTQ Commission and seven appointments to the Youth Commission. Last week, I had my monthly meeting with Office of Civil Rights. Speaking of commissioners, there are commissions, there are six vacancies right now on the Human Rights Commission. So if you know somebody who might be good in that capacity, please send them my way. OCR is about to hire, or they may have already hired, a new director for their Race and Social Justice work. So I'm very excited about that. The department is also working on an ordinance. We've been working on it together with them for codifying the Race and Social Justice Initiative. This is a really important piece of work that we've been hearing across the city from all of our departments, but it is an initiative. And so there is work underway to, to create an ordinance and that will be coming forward. Probably not until later this year, but excited that that work is moving forward. District updates, last week, my team and I took a mobility tour of District Two. One place we stopped was Lighthouse for the Blind. If you don't know, it is a social enterprise that provides employment, support and training opportunities for people who are blind, who are deaf-blind and who have, who are blind with other disabilities. The Lighthouse is important. It's provided employment and support for, for people in our community since nineteen eighteen. I was excited to meet with the CEO, George Abbott, and with Amy Cole, who's the VP of Employee and Community Services. Part of what they provide in terms of employment, it's basically a manufacturing facility and they do kind of precision parts for Boeing. They do personal hydration systems and canteens and things like that for, for D O D. They have about two hundred and fifty employees who use public transit to get to this facility every day. And so part of what we were talking about were the challenges that their employees have with navigating from the bus stop past construction zones, for example. Challenges with sidewalk and crosswalk design and maintenance. And we, you know, there are lots of construction happening around their facility, lots of new projects that are underway. And as they are, one of them is at the very beginning stages, which means it is basically a pit much, much like we have across the street here in front of City Hall. Just a pit with a fence around it between the bus stop and this facility, and the fence was fallen over. And so we were hearing from, from George that, you know, about the dangers here because if somebody is not protected by having a fence there, there is a very real possibility of people falling into the pit. So we need to beef up our construction monitoring around construction projects and make sure that people aren't, aren't in danger. Anyway, we will be talking more about that later. We also met with students from Rayner Beach High School who had written letters to my office to share some of their concerns about traffic safety near their school. Many of these students have nearly been hit by drivers while they were in the crosswalk. Having experienced that myself, I know how scary that can be. And so they just want to, wanted to express to their elected official, their representative, that they want to be safe walking in their neighborhood. Ironically, or maybe not, on our way back to the Rayner Beach Light Rail Station, my staff and I witnessed a driver make an illegal U-turn and use the sidewalk as his re-entry point coming within feet of a toddler who was in the parking lot with their parent. So I will be back at Rayner Beach High School tomorrow to speak more with the students about advocating for a safer experience for them and for their community. And I just want to say again, you know, how important it is for us to be hearing from constituents about the very real day-to-day experiences that they have. You know, so we can understand what, from their perspective, what pedestrian safety looks like. And especially as Councilmember Peterson was kind enough to, to start talking about scheduling a Vision Zero briefing. I want to have some real examples to talk about in those, in those conversations. We, my staff and I joined with Mayor Harrell's One Seattle Day of Service on Saturday. We packed, I think, three hundred bags of groceries at the Rayner Valley Food Bank and did some cleanup around the elementary school in Rayner Beach. I also learned after being outdoors for many hours at this particular time of year that I'm allergic to cottonwood. So maybe you guys learned that too. I went home and took some Benadryl. On Wednesday, I toured the Seattle Center to get a better understanding of the proposed sound transit station placement. Really concerning that there is consideration being given to a site so near the Seattle Repertory Theater within the Seattle campus rather than outside on the, one of the surrounding streets. So we will be in more conversation with them and I think we're all hearing similar things, regardless of what part of the city our constituents are in, that there's just a lot more information people need before they feel comfortable with the decisions that are getting made there. We met with leaders last week from the Tubman Health Center. This is a new group of folks who are advocating to advance health justice, culturally appropriate care and integrative medicine. They are designing a community health clinic in the South End that will specialize in meeting the needs of marginalized communities in, in Seattle and are looking to open their clinical doors in twenty twenty-five. So they are already providing service, some service in an existing facility, but are hoping to be able to purchase a parcel and to have their own clinic. So I look forward to partnering with them to increase access to medical care in the South End. On Sunday, members of my staff took part in two different Bike Month-related events. One was to celebrate the really incredible work done to promote youth education around cycling. This was held by District Two's Bike Works Program. If you don't know it, you should check it out. It's fantastic. The other was a kidical mass on Lake Washington Boulevard where nearly a hundred parents and kids from one to ten years old were out riding their bikes along the boulevard to really showcase what a great place that can be when families are out to enjoy recreation, to be safe and to really just create a great environment for, for their families. And then finally, this week, I'll be hosting the next in my series of Seattle Within Reach discussions. You'll recall, the first one that we had was on the Comprehensive Plan. We had a second one on social housing. And so this third event is going to be on mobility, this being Mobility Month. So we look forward to a discussion on mobility issues. We'll be joined by Anna Zivart, who is the Director for the Disability Mobility Initiative Program, Disability Rights Washington, Clara Cantor, who's an organizer with Seattle Greenways. And I'm really excited. We'll be joined also by Vancouver, B C's City Councilmember Christine Boyle. So I'm looking forward to that conversation. That's going to be on Thursday. It will be recorded and we'll be providing a link to it once that is done. That is all I have this afternoon. Does anybody have questions or comments? Okay, then I will hand it off to Councilmember Mosca.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, colleagues. The next meeting of the Finance and Housing Committee meeting is going to be on June first at nine thirty A M. We have four items on our agenda. This includes the Office of Housing Race and Social Justice Initiative Presentation, the City Budgets Office Race and Social Justice Initiative Presentation, the Office of Housing Director Appointment. That includes all of the questions that you have provided additional input to that we are expecting back from interim director Michael Winkler Chin before our next committee meeting. And we will publish, republish the agenda in anticipation of our committee meeting on June first with her answers. We'll also have the Washington State Department of Transportation Royal Brahm Lease, the two real estate leases that are coming to us from the Finance Administrative Services Department. For full council, there are three items from the Finance and Housing Committee meeting. This will be on tomorrow's full council meeting. This is at two P M. on Tuesday. The first two bills are the Exceptions Ordinance and the Carry Forward Ordinance. This is Council Bill one two zero three one six and Council Bill one two zero three one seven. Every year, we address these two sets of legislation as part of our process to consider as supplemental discussions or supplemental adds to our budget bill. The Carry Forward Ordinance includes, excuse me, the Carry Forward Ordinance and the Exceptions Ordinance had become part of our regular routine course of business to retroactively approve overages in spending and to carry forward funding from the previous year into the current year for projects that have not yet been, been, been complete. This year unfortunately is no exception, so we will continue this process and these bills will be in front of us tomorrow. I do want to note, as we discussed in our Finance and Housing Committee meeting, a great amount of work has gone into thinking about this process from the City Budgets Office, thanks to Director Julie Dingly and central staff, thanks to Ali Canucci and Tom Micso for their work to think about how we can streamline the process so that it is more so that it is not an expectation that there will be an Exceptions Ordinance and that we get a greater transparency throughout the year on any underspend that happens so that we know going into the end of the year, clear numbers about what would be in a Carry Forward Ordinance. So this, this year, the legislation in front of us is pretty routine and a great central staff memo. If you haven't had the chance to read through that yet, please do. Central staff provided an overview of what we've done in the past and a little preview of some of the things that we're working on in future years. Both ordinances were approved unanimously by the Finance and Housing Committee and they will be in front of us for tomorrow's vote. The other item that we have is Council Bill one two zero three one eight. This is the Office of Housing Staffing Bill. This legislation authorizes the Office of Staffing to add staffing to perform the range of services and activity that go into investing in and promoting the development of affordable housing through development and acquisition of affordable housing. This is supported by the Jump Start Spend Plan. Again, as a reminder, up to five percent of the funding allocated to each of the departments was allowed to go to administrative needs to make sure that implementation was possible. And this is just around half of that amount to going to the staffing needs. The rest is going to go into creating affordable housing, both rental units and first-time homeownership opportunities. So thanks again to the great stewardship of the funding from Office of Housing and their work to make sure that they have sufficient staff to implement the ordinance as well as trying to get as much dollars out the door to build affordable housing. Want to highlight, last week I had the chance to speak with folks across the country and national partners that are working on labor standards and protecting workers through the Local Progress Economic Justice Advisory Table. They are on the cusp of releasing a new report that is focused on workers' rights that can be promoted at the local level. This is especially important as we think about the ways in which local jurisdictions have been able to spearhead labor standard policies in cities, in counties, and to be able to see those take wave across the country. Very excited about the opportunity that has been presented to work with Local Progress. And this is in partnership with the Harvard Law and Work Life Program, Local Progress and the Economic Policy Institute. So thanks to all who joined that presentation last Friday and we will get, look forward to sharing out that report with you very soon. This week, I'll be attending a couple of exciting events. On Wednesday, I'll be at the Kaiser Permanente Bike Everywhere Breakfast benefiting Cascade Bicycle Club. Later in the day, I'll be going over to see our friends from Weldon Palette for a, a visit of their collaborative Reintegration Resource Center. Looking forward to seeing how their units are being stood up very quickly and hearing more about how we're able to serve so many in our community who not only need shelter but need additional assistance with reentering from incarceration, homelessness and recovery. And all, all look, I look forward to reporting out, World Works, as folks probably knows, offers temporary to permanent direct placement for employment programs connecting members of employment opportunities in construction, general labor, manufacturing, property maintenance and retail. So look forward to celebrating that. And a little bit of personal news from our office. I want to note that we have three weeks to celebrate Aretha Basu, who has been in our office since before my election. She actually served as my campaign manager for the twenty seventeen election. Has been a, a, a strong part of Team Teresa, providing everything from important moments of levity in our office and always there as a guiding star in terms of a moral compass, has served as our lead on everything from economic justice to arts and culture and working with the courts and, and so many other strategies as we think about reimagining public safety. Aretha, we are so proud to have, have the opportunity to have worked with you and folks, she won't be going far. So I'm sending out an email about that here soon and look forward to celebrating all that she's done. And we'll make sure that you get a notice as well as a way to celebrate her work on June third. We'll send out a notice to the floor if you'd like to come by and, and say thanks or, or congratulations or, and send her on her way. But she won't be going far and we just wanted to make sure that we had plenty of time to send in your notes about anything you'd like to share with Aretha Basu. So thanks again, Aretha, for all you do, for providing the puns, the dad jokes for me and for the incredible advice on public policy and strategy. You will be missed, but we know we'll see you often. And that's it, Madam President. Look forward to sharing that information around as we celebrate Aretha and look forward to seeing you all on June first.
Well, it looks like I have a pair of earrings for Aretha, my traditional going away gift or welcoming gift, so I'll come down hall and hand it over.
You know she'd love that, so thank you in advance.
Councilmember Nelson.
Good afternoon, everyone. Tomorrow on the full council agenda, there are three pieces of utilities-related legislation that Councilmember Peterson and I are co-sponsoring and I will present on two of them. Council Bill one two zero three two seven extends the suspension of interest charges and late payment fees until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And Council Bill one two zero three two eight would authorize Seattle City Light to extend the Emergency Bill Assistance Programs through the end of twenty twenty-three. And these programs provide two credits toward the outstanding balance of utility bills for, for all income-eligible households. And they were set to expire at the end of twenty twenty-two by ordinance one two six four nine three. So this is an extension of that. Really looking forward to the final vote on Resolution three two zero five zero coming up tomorrow. And then the Economic Development Technology and City Light Committee meeting is this Wednesday at nine thirty. And there's just one thing on the agenda, which is the Department, the Office of Economic Development's Race and Social Justice Initiative Report. Right, last week, I met with Amy Lillard of the Washington, of Washington Film Works to talk about the incredible opportunities that our region and also the state has with the passage of House Bill nineteen fourteen, which expanded state film incentives from three point five million to fifteen million. And I learned some interesting things about, about these incentives. So one is that Washington is now the first state in the country to offer incentives for films telling stories about historically marginalized communities. Washington will also be providing half and three-quarter million dollar grants toward workforce development in marginalized communities. And the bill also provides funding support for emerging filmmakers with small budget productions at one million dollars or less. There, they will be the, the, the first. first agency to contribute to the overall budget of these small productions. But I, you know, so I learned a lot, but I think Amy's main point in contacting me and I and I believe other council members was basically to to tell Seattle that we need to be ready to respond to a huge increase in in permit applications in interest, both from from local and regional film production crews and members of the artistic community, but also film productions from across the country. And so she was really saying that it 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 will be important for her to have someone, some place, some entity to direct interest to, the city of Seattle. So now is a great time to equip OED with with at least the staffing that will be needed to process the these increased permit applications, you know, strengthen Seattle's strategy on film and how to promote it, and also well, there's ongoing talk about the creation of a film commission, so that will help. If if we were to do that, that would generate the 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 industry expertise to get Seattle back into its place of prominence as one of the best places to create film on the West Coast. All right. So I mentioned that I was going to go to a fire department training, and you know, I have to say that I didn't really I didn't know much about how we train our firefighters. You know, I know more about about how our police recruits are trained, they go to the academy, et cetera, but I did not know that the new recruits for the Seattle Fire Department go through a fifteen-week training that is, the curriculum is designed by by Seattle firefighters and 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 leadership. It's a nationally renowned training program, and it's taught by our own firefighters as instructors. So the what I was able to watch last Thursday was the last phase of this fifteen-week pro training program, which was basically them putting out deliberately set fires in a house. This this one was a two-story house in Fremont. Property owners donate a home that's going to be demolished for this purpose, and really saw obviously, we can all sort of imagine what hard work it is, but just seeing really the them in action was humbling, to say the least, and I got to hear the debrief of what went well and what could have been done better. But the point is, those people are now all across the city, helping to protect our homes and businesses and other structures from fire and ready to put them out if need be right now. So I also learned a bit about the 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 budget needs of the department, and I'm sure that some of this will come up in the budgets discussions later on this year, but basically staffing for the Seattle Fire Department has remained fairly static despite the growth in population and some of the new challenges posed by encampments and also responding to the pandemic. So that was really interesting. I recommend anybody checking that out if you have the opportunity. All right. Councilmember Lewis explained very well what we did on Saturday, but I did join him and Mayor Harrell, Seahawks coach Pete Pete Carroll, and the the COO, the Sounders, whose name is Maya Mendosa Ekstrom. And this was actually the Alliance for Pioneer Square's fifteenth annual spring clean, so it just conveniently fell on the day of service. Anyway, it was inspiring to see everyone there, and I got to know folks at businesses that I'd never heard of in the neighborhood. I had already heard of the Sounders and the Seahawks. So anyway, that was a really great event. Kudos to Mayor Harrell's administration for pulling off that feat of coordination and 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 also just providing an opportunity for all of us to come together, be of service, and meet each other. After that, I headed to on Saturday afternoon to Martin Luther King Junior Soul Rights Memorial Park for a vigil that was organized by Reverend Walden and Mothers for Police Accountability to to honor the the ten victims that were killed in Buffalo at Tops Market last week. It was really powerful to be in community and in in community members actually studied the lives of of all the people murdered and in related details about their lives to really, I don't know, to to touch on the humanity that was lost and 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 it was it was just, I will just say, a powerful collective event to mourn and also celebrate their lives. All right, tomorrow night, also, I'll be joining Councilmember Lewis again at an event celebrating the Seattle Music Commission, and I'm supposed to talk about the importance of of the music industry on Seattle's economy and in Seattle's recovery from the pandemic, but I'm really looking forward to learning what more the city could do to support the nightlife sector as a whole. You know, be that legislation at the city level or the state level, or regulatory changes that we can support at LCB, whatever it may be. I'm looking forward to hearing from the experts, which is after all why we have commissions. All right, and then last thing, and I'll pass it over. Finally, my office is going to tour and enjoy lunch at the new PCC Market downtown, and we'll we'll be toured by the president and CEO and find out how what it's been like to be downtown. That's it. I will now turn it, well, I'll ask if there are any questions. Seeing none, I will pass it to Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. Good afternoon, colleagues. On tomorrow afternoon's full city council agenda, there are four items from our Committee on Transportation and Seattle Public Utilities. Council Bill one two zero three hundred renews a permit for a tunnel downtown. Council Bill one two zero three oh one renews a permit for two tunnels for Harborview Hospital, and Council Bill one two zero three oh two renews a permit for Skybridge Swedish Hospital. And then we have Resolution three two zero five three, which grants conceptual approval to allow Dunlumber to install a communication pipe under Latona Avenue Northeast to connect its building, its existing building and wallingford to one it's constructing across the street. As Councilmember Nelson mentioned, on tomorrow's full city council agenda, we're co-sponsoring three bills from the executive to help Seattle City Light and Seattle Public Utilities customers still struggling with their bills. Our next Committee on Transportation, Seattle Public Utilities, is scheduled for Tuesday, June seven at nine thirty AM. At that June seven, committee will be considering several items, which are likely to include two bills from Seattle Public Utilities. One is a technical correction, accepting two property deeds to perfect SPU's property rights for two parcels originally acquired in nineteen eighty-six, and the other bill is to accept an easement from the State Department of Natural Resources to install a replacement sewer line. As we know, the Sound Transit Board is working toward its decisions for the West Seattle Ballard Link Extension routes and stations. As early as our June seventh Transportation Committee will be prepared to start discussing a joint resolution with the executive regarding Seattle's preferences. After our first discussion, we'll have a second committee meeting, potentially potentially vote on that resolution probably in July. Councilmembers can reach out to central staff analyst Calvin Chow to provide early input. Also at our June seven meeting, we'll vote on Mayor Harrell's nomination to amend the lead, become the permanent general manager and CEO of Seattle Public Utilities. Again, as Chair of the Committee on Following Resolution three one eight six eight for that nomination process, confirmation process. We've already circulated the mayor's appointment packet to you, and we'll be circulating and release answers to our preliminary questions in a couple of days, well before the June seven confirmation vote at our committee meeting. Also at our June seven meeting, SDOT will provide their RSGI report, and SDOT and SPU are potentially finalizing other minor pieces of legislation that will try to vote out of committee on June seventh. This weekend in District Four, I participated in Mayor Harrell's one Seattle Day of Service with several other neighbors, cleaning up Cowan Park. There are many other locations bustling with volunteer spirit in northeast Seattle, including along the Ave to spruce up the U District for the resurgence of the popular U District Street Fair. The U District Street Fair return is a huge success on both Saturday and Sunday this past weekend. Thanks to the nonprofit U District Partnership, all of the sponsors of the event, and tens of thousands of visitors springing forth from the new light rail station. With the opening of that light rail station at northeast Forty-third Street and Brooklyn Avenue, it's easier than ever to get to the shopping, dining, and festivities of the U District, which remains the funky heart of District Four. That concludes my report. Any questions before we hear from Councilmember Swan? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Good afternoon, everyone. There is one item on tomorrow's city council agenda from the Sustainability and Renters Rights Committee. This is a bill from my office in response to a Court of Appeals decision that objected to one small part of Seattle's six-month eviction defense. That ordinance requires renters to attest that they that they have suffered financial hardship in order to be eligible to use that defense against eviction, and the Court of Appeals objected to the mechanics of that attestation, specifically that there isn't language giving landlords the ability to rebut the claim that the tenants are facing financial hardship. I want to be clear, as I as I've been throughout and also at the committee on Friday, that the six-month eviction defense is still in effect because the city has appealed the Court of Appeals decision. However, out of an abundance of caution, and particularly to avoid confusion, my office sponsored this bill to respond to the Court of Appeals concerns. The initial version of the bill drafted by my office addressed the Court of Appeals concern by simply removing the requirement for financial hardship. Therefore, there would be no claim to rebut. And as I've argued in the past, it should be a given that if a renter is in eviction court, it's because they have suffered financial hardship. There's there's no other reason they would be there. It's not like it's something anybody would desire to have on their rental record. Requiring people to declare financial hardship, particularly if their landlords start challenging those claims, drags the renters through a humiliating process that in reality has a chilling effect, preventing the very people this eviction defense was intended to help from using it. The bill was discussed in the Sustainability and Renters Rights Committee last Friday, and it was amended to address the Court of Appeals concern in an entirely different way than what I just stated, instead of removing the requirement for financial hardship. In other words, in removing instead of removing all the elements of means testing, the bill now keeps that requirement and adds language explaining how a landlord can rebut those claims of financial hardship. I do did not support that amendment for the reasons I just explained. However, as I said in committee, I still support the legislation because it will allow the eviction defense attorneys from the Housing Justice Project to use this eviction defense without fear of confusion. That is my report. Do councilmembers have any questions or comments before I end the report? I don't see anything, so Council President Wallace, back to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Swan. Back to me. I hope you get well, so.
Thank you.
Good. And before I begin, I just want Councilperson Peterson to know that I did not know there was a funky part of D four, but thank you for putting that on the record, so I will go check it out. Thank you. Okay, guys, I will be brief. There are three appointments, as I shared earlier, recommended by the Governance Native Communities and Tribal Governments Committee on tomorrow's full council consent agenda. Again, this includes the appointments of Danielle Alvarado and Dustin Lambro to the Labor Standards Advisory Committee, and Chahalia Ala Hia Lima, Aha Lima, God, I got it right, yes, to the Seattle Ethics and Elections. I think I got that right. That being said, let's see what else we've got here. The next meeting of the Governance Native Communities and Tribal Governments Committee will be this will be Thursday, June sixteenth at nine thirty. Also, tomorrow's full council agenda is Council Bill one two zero three two four, which I have sponsored and which was referred directly to full council without committee review. This ordinance appropriates funds to city departments to cover the costs of complying with six ordinances that were previously passed in late twenty twenty-one and early twenty twenty-two. Funds to cover these costs have been held in reserve and are available. Corina Bull on Central Staff has reviewed this bill and can answer any questions. Last week, I had my weekly meeting with interim Chief Diaz, in which we spoke about staffing levels at SPD, as well as SPD's current work to collect and review data on missing murdered indigenous people. I meet with Chief Diaz at least at least once a week. Okay. So the missing murdered indigenous women data collection work was the featured presentation in the Governance Native Communities and Tribal Governments Committee on Thursday. The committee at the committee, we introduced, and I don't think all of you have met him yet, Luis Gomez Ventura, who is the data collection specialist now working with SPD on these cases, and we want to welcome Luis and the work that he's been doing and working with the CLAN Health Board. In addition, in committee, we had Esther Lucero, who is the CEO of CLAN Health Board, Christina Diego, and Shannon Keen were also present to work to talk about, and they had a PowerPoint as well, about the collaboration and the five-year contract that they put together with SPD for missing murdered indigenous women and girls. So that taken together, it's clear that the committee members and the panel, that there's more work needed to partner with appropriate tribal police, tribal governments, our city attorney's office, and others to address cold cases and prevent the jurisdictional issues and misclassifications that have been an obstacle to ensuring complete investigations that ensuring that complete investigations are indeed done. So I am looking forward to continuing to receive regular updates on the progress of this work, and I aim with the aim to prevent indigenous families from experiencing the loss of a loved one. And as you know, we've been working on this for a couple of years. I also met with the Sound Transit Board CEO Search Committee. As you know, I serve on that committee. We are still looking and have narrowed down the candidates who will be our next CEO of Sound Transit, and we reviewed the finalists for the CEO position at Sound Transit. More to come on that. Last Friday, I participated in a Sound Transit meeting regarding the West Seattle Ballard Link Light Rail Extension. It was what we call a workshop, a three-hour workshop. This was an opportunity for regional board members to review options for consideration in the DEIS, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Brindell's right off here to the side, I believe we're going to vote on that on July twenty eighth. It was late June, now it's July twenty eighth. Upcoming this week, I will be attending another Sound Transit North King Sub Area Briefing on Wednesday and the Sound Transit Board meeting on Thursday, as I always do. On Friday, I'll be meeting with the Ironworkers Local Eighty-Six regarding apprenticeship programs and facilities at North Cale College. Those of you who have been around for a while know that we started our apprenticeship program under the leadership of Dr. Brown, who was the president of North Cale College, and we've continued that work with Dr. Crawford, who is now the new president, or not new, it's over a year now, of North Cale College. We have been working on these apprenticeship programs and working with all the local labor unions, and it's just been a phenomenal success, and we want to continue that. And we also have been working with North Cale College and the Cale School District in the Promise Program, and a big shout out to North Cale College. In D five, they have been a phenomenal pillar with all of our community groups and business groups to making including light rail, making North Cale College, the campus, and their facilities, quite frankly, available not only to D five, but to the north end. This week, I will be attending, I think it's the first, Friends and Fried Bread at Cale University, hosted by Coach Tony Monroe, member of the Accumination. He is the Program Assistant and Assistant Coach for the Indigenous Peoples Institute at Seattle University, the Track and Field Cross Country Program. I'll be there along with the CEO Jackie McCormick of Rise Above and a bunch of our other tribally or native-led native organizations and tribal representatives, and I'm hoping we make it a regular thing if indeed Tony said he's providing huckleberry jam for my fried bread. So if you guys want to join me, you're more than welcome. I think that's all I got for you today, and before I adjourn, let's remind everybody that we're going to have an executive session. It will be for half an hour, and I'll let the clerk do that. So let me go ahead and read into the record what we need to do to legally go into executive session. As Presiding Officer, I am announcing that the Seattle City Council will now convene into executive session. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss pending potential or actual litigation. The council's executive session is an opportunity for the council to discuss confidential legal matters with the city attorneys as authorized by law. A legal monitor from the city attorney's office is always present to ensure that council reserves questions of policy for open sessions. I expect the time of the executive session to it to end by whatever thirty minutes is, Madam Clerk. I'll let you read that in a moment. If the executive session is to be extended beyond that time, I will announce the extension and the expected duration. I'm guessing if we go thirty minutes, it will go till four o'clock. Is that is that clear, Madam Clerk?
That's clear.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. So do I have my colleagues stay on the line, or how do we do this? Thank you, guys. So do I have my colleagues stay on the line or how do we do this?